Are we short one?
Dan, Dan wasn't able to make it today.
Yeah, no, Dan's not. Okay.
Yeah, we've got six commissioners here, so that should be everyone we're expecting tonight.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was missing. Yep, I'm sorry. My, my mistake.
All right, so we are live now and recording.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 29, 2022 Planning Commission Regular Video Meeting. It is now 6:04 PM and the Planning Commission meeting is now in session. I am Mike Murphy and the Planning Commission Vice Chair. Tonight's virtual Planning Commission meeting is being brought to you using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Zoom video of this meeting is being broadcast live via Zoom and will be uploaded to the city YouTube channel. Deputy CPD Director Allison Van Gorp and other staff members are participating in the meeting remotely. Public mem- audience members are listening to the meeting by telephone or using the Zoom teleconferencing application. Welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your microphones turned on. Whenever Senior Planner Adam Zach conducts a roll call during the meeting, Adam will be conducting roll call votes so that we accurately capture each person's vote. Adam, forge ahead.
Great, and I think one amendment to that, Zayla is gonna take our roll call votes tonight.
Love the delegation, Adam.
Um, so first, I will take attendance with the roll call. Sorry, I, my Zoom is frozen. Can you guys hear me?
We can still hear you. Your video is frozen, though.
Okay, so Michael Murphy, Vice Chair Mike Murphy.
Present.
Carolyn Boatsman.
Present.
Michael Curry.
Present.
Victor Reshish.
Here.
Kate Akhuz.
Present.
And Adam Ragham.
Present.
For this meeting, we continue to utilize the Zoom platform. I'll do my best to recognize each of you as in order which hands are raised either electronically or physically. And after being recognized, you may then ask your question. The first item on the agenda is special business for the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. Allison, you have a brief overview of the process.
I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Adam. We're switching things up in a couple of directions here tonight, but he's just gonna give you a quick overview of how we'll do the voting for the, we'll do the Chair election first and then the Vice Chair.
Sure, so it wasn't that long ago that we, we did this last time, but so the way the nominations will work is we'll go around and the individual commissioners can nominate other commissioners to be the Chair of the Planning Commission and then once we have all of the, or once we have all of the nominations, then we'll do a thumbs up, thumbs down vote for those nominees and we'll do the, we'll repeat the same process for the Vice Chair as well.
Okay, so I have been authorized by Dan Hubbell to renominate him and I will do so. So are there any other nominations for the Chair?
Just a point of order. Do we need to second the first nomination?
No.
Seconds aren't required for this.
Carolyn?
Yes, I would like to nominate you, Michael.
Well, I'm willing to serve another year as Vice Chair for sure. And but I appreciate the, the suggestion.
So you're declining, is that right?
I, I, I think I will, but, but I'll, yeah, I think I will. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Should we let's do a thumbs up vote for Dan?
So just to clarify, you're not running, is that right, Michael?
That is correct.
Okay.
So I see one, two, three, four, five, six unanimous. Okay. Next order of business is the Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair? Yes, Carolyn.
I will nominate Michael Murphy for Vice Chair.
Okay. Any other nominations? Apparently not. Let's do a thumbs up on, on that. Looks like it's unanimous again.
Great.
Okay, well, that was easy. Is there anyone signed up for?
Uh, no, nobody has signed up.
Okay, so okay, Allison, I assume we can then bypass that whole.
That's correct. You can just say there's no public appearances tonight and we'll, we'll move on to other business.
Okay. So we're now moving on to the next item of business. Since there are no public appearances, the first item on the agenda is review and approval of the April 27, 2022 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll motion to approve the minute.
Wait, I have a second.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Victor?
Yes, I can't believe we're still talking about this, but in the February minutes, we need to adjust the language, the trust, it's the language, it was Commissioner Reshish proposed a correction to the minutes related to the change he proposed to the February minutes, striking the words from February minutes, instead amended to use language trustee of Olson Family Trust, not Olson. A L S I N.
Any objections? Do we have a second for that correction or do we need a second, Allison?
Got that jotted down and I think it's really just a correction from, the correction from last time, so we'll just make sure that gets taken care of this time.
Okay. So the, so the motion on table is to approve the minutes as corrected. All in favor, say aye. Or thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Yes, minutes are approved. The next order of business is the review and adoption of the bylaws. Actually, before we get into that, I want to, and we've got sort of the procedural process, things out of the way, since we have two new members, it'd be nice if Adam and Michael would introduce themselves and say a little bit about who they are and why they're interested in being on this august body. Adam, I'll start with you.
All right, um, hello, my name's Adam Ragham. My wife and I moved to Mercer Island right before the pandemic. So I figured, you know, we planned to stay here for a while, so I wanted to get involved in city government. Awesome, very excited to be here. Background wise, I'm a systems engineer in the aerospace industry and love airplanes, all the stuff in the back there that's blurred out or models of things that fly. So I'm excited to be here and happy to contribute to local government.
Great, thanks.
My name is Michael Curry. I've been on the island, I think, right about 2008, so both my kids have gone through the school systems. Curious note, we live in the house that my wife grew up in and she went to the same school as my kids did, so yeah, so it's funny how that comes full circle. I've always wanted to volunteer, you know, serve my country, coaching youth sports, whatever, and then volunteering now as well to to try to make Mercer Island or keep Mercer Island safe and, you know, whatever I can do to help make it a better place as well, so. For everybody.
Glad to have you. Okay, back, back to work here. And back to the bylaws. Allison, are you gonna give us a little presentation of that? Or Adam?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that one. So Adam Zach, Senior Planner. So the, the bylaws are the kind of governing rules for the Planning Commission. And we look at those every year at the first meeting after June of the year, of each year. And so if the Planning Commission wants to amend those bylaws, they can at this time. There's been a couple of proposals that hopefully received via email that were submitted by different members of the Planning Commission, so I'll defer to them to talk on those. Staff has not proposed any changes to the bylaws this year.
Okay. So Kate, you're, you had one that was circulated. Do you want to speak to? Well, I think, do we, I guess we, we need a, a motion to approve the bylaws for purposes of discussions. That correct, Allison?
Yeah, I would recommend doing a, a motion to approve the bylaws and then any commissioner could make a motion to amend the bylaws from there and we could discuss each amendment. If there is a, a vote to approve any of those amendments, I would recommend that we actually hold on approving the bylaws tonight and we'll take those recommended amendments to the city attorney for review and then bring back the final version with any suggested revisions from the city attorney at the next meeting.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the bylaws?
So moved.
Second? Second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. We have some discussion. Kate, do you wanna start? Talk about what you had proposed?
Sure, and it sounds like Allison, you're saying now is the time that I would say I would motion to amend the bylaw? And then there's some discussion of that proposed amendment?
That's correct. Make a motion. If you get a second, then we can discuss.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the bylaws, the purpose being to address the topic of equity in communications, planning commission communications.
If that's a motion to amend, I will second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. So Kate, do you wanna start by explaining the motion and, and the purposes and what it will do?
Sure, and I'd like to first start by apologizing. Being relatively new, I was not too keen on the the way that you send these things and it looks like I made an error of sending something directly to all planning commissioners rather than a B C C. And you may have told me this before, but we're not, we're not allowed to do that in case there's a conversation that happens and then that email chain can become a meeting.
Yeah, if there's more than three commission members having like essentially a backroom conversation, even if it's over email, that could constitute a violation of the Public Meetings Act. So we just ask that anytime you wanna send information out to the commission, please send it to staff and then we'll send it out on B C C because that avoids, you know, an inadvertent reply to an email that could then be a violation of O P M A.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So the, the suggestion that I made, I'm, I'm a little concerned generally and this is part of the reason I wanted to help support city government through becoming a commissioner that we don't as far as I can tell, you know, the city passed an, an equity motion, but it doesn't have a lot of procedural tactics for how you would create equity in public process. So my suggestion would be that we work on amending, or we amend section 5.1 language. There are two goals under that language that says we're going to undertake a fair, meaningful and effective outreach to affected parties. And my observation is that affected parties, all parties who are affected aren't really showing up to city meetings. And I'm wondering if we don't need to address our outreach process and track participation in public meetings. And I'm particularly thinking the term effective outreach, so the first proposed amendment would be to amend goal one, to change effective outreach to effective culturally appropriate outreach to include solicitations and media that are consumed by all demographics on the island and full translation of outreach materials to all language where more than 5% of the island residents speak a primary language in the home other than English. I know we have quite a lot of those. And then, then I would suggest adding a third and fourth goal, the third goal, reading, monitor and annually report on outreach effectiveness by tracking the diversity of community input at commission meetings. And based on my experience, that's something the city attorney would definitely have to weigh in on. I know anytime you track demographic data, there's some legalities to that. And a fourth goal that reads adapt outreach and public input strategies and processes if there's limited diversity in the demographics of island residents participating in the public process. It's a lot. I don't know if it needs to be this robust and maybe staff can speak to that. But I'm concerned that our traditional hearing and signing up to speak for three minutes, I'm concerned that we're not actually hearing from all affected parties. And so I wanted to address that and I'd love to hear if people think this is an appropriate place and if there's suggestions to modify the language.
Adam?
Oh, yeah, I, I reviewed the, the document. Thanks for sharing it. I think it's, it's detailed. I just it left me with a lot more questions, like there's no, how do we define culturally appropriate? How do we define limited diversity? Are we assuming that it's the process and the media that are causing this perceived lack of diverse public input or perhaps just certain demographics do not wish to participate? So we could go through all this song and dance, include, introduce cost and complexity and it may not address this perception. So I, I think I'm kinda concerned by this. I think this could weigh down the goal of the Planning Commission. And I think unless we know it's the process that's at fault, but I don't think that's demonstrated. I think we're just assuming it's the process that's at fault and not just maybe there's only certain demographics that wish to participate. So those are some concerns I had.
Victor?
So I have a question. So how many languages are there that we, where we have more than 5% of island residents speaking it as a primary language?
I think we have at least two and those would be Mandarin Chinese and forgetting the other one. I think Mandarin Chinese is primarily, and that number could be 10%, 5% is the number that King County uses. You know, ideally, I hear what you're saying, Adam, ideally, you know, the, the city would have an equity plan and it would have definitions for things like culturally appropriate. So maybe the level of detail here isn't appropriate. I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, I do, I do a lot of outreach in my professional life outside of the planning commission and we are finding that people do wanna participate, but they don't necessarily feel comfortable. And there are cultural reasons for this in some cases, coming to a public meeting where there are loud voices that are dominating and the way that you get feedback from some groups is by doing in reach where somebody attends a, a meeting that is uncomfortable and it's the word comfortable that caught me in this that sort of triggered me wanting to take action. So, yeah, I, I understand that, you know, that the definition are tricky and it's detailed and but I don't know, I don't know how to address this because I think that we are I, in my experience, it's not that people don't wanna have their voice heard. It's that the venue, either they haven't received the memo in a way that they can access or the venue is not comfortable. And there's been a ton of research on this for the county and it's been done, that research has been done on language groups similar to what we have on Mercer Island. So, yeah, it is additional cost and expense, but I think it is important, especially if the council is committed to the equity motion they passed. You can't just say we're for equity. You have to take some action and that does cost money.
Carolyn?
Well, um, there may be some, some, you know, good concerns being raised here. I'm I'm not sure that we know how well we're doing and I'm not sure we know if we do have problems, what the right solutions would be. To me, this sounds perhaps more like a, a work item to look into rather than something to try to amend with very specific wording, you know, at this time. I see, and I'll just off, offer my personal reflections on some of what the others have said. I think that it's quite universal now that an awful lot of people don't pay a lot of attention to what is going on at various, you know, local government or even national government levels. I don't know that that's something that we're responsible for fixing, but there may be some ways we can improve the participation and we, you know, might do well to look into that. So um, yeah, I'll probably leave it at that.
Victor, is that an old hand or?
I, actually, I didn't get to finish my question. I got cut off, so. So the question is for either Adam or Allison. If you, do you have any idea what the cost of translating to two languages plus doing tracking, plus doing outreach to all the demographics, what that, what that would cost both monetarily as well as staff time and are we staff for that?
I, I don't know really how much it would cost. I mean, just having received this proposal today, we haven't had a lot of chance to analyze specifics there. I, my, you know, my gut reaction is I think it would definitely take additional resources beyond the financial resources and staff resources that we currently have.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's, it sounds like we're not ready to go there yet, so I'm happy to, I don't know if there's a way to recall a motion. Is there a Roberts Rule on that? Or we just vote on it? I do, I do think it could be a work item and I understand that we need to be prioritized with other work items. I, I'm concerned listening to the conversation here. Knowing, knowing that the council did pass a motion about equity, you know, that's, that's essentially saying that they're going to do something about it and doing something about anything costs money. So if we don't know what the right thing to do is and then it's not time for something this specific. But I am concerned hearing the conversation that, oh, this costs money and that's a reason not to do it. Why would we, why would we say, why would the city say they're behind equity and that not do anything about it? So it might be that I need to learn a little bit more about what the city plans to do in terms of equity planning. Yeah, I am concerned, you know, and, and people ask the question, how well, how do we know how well we're doing right now? Well, all you have to do is watch a city council meeting. And there's a very specific demographic that shows up every time by age and race and, and tends to dominate the public comment. And it's not representative of the island. You know, there are a lot of age groups that aren't showing up and I appreciate what Carolyn said that that it's, it's not just a Mercer Island problem. So I think some creativity and figuring out what we can do to improve that outreach because if we're making recommendations for changes to a comp plan that's going to affect all islanders, then I would think that there would be a desire to get public input from all islanders.
Could I just comment on that from the staff perspective?
Yeah, go ahead, Allison.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I, I agree with what you're saying, Kate, and I think I'm glad you brought it up. It's important. For many years, this has been something I've thought about a lot and been interested in. I've, of course, noticed the same things you were just saying about who shows up to meetings. I think for Planning Commission, you know, maybe it's, you could say it's even worse because a lot of times no one shows up. It depends on the topic, clearly, like certain topics, we get a lot of participation and certain topics, we get none. You know, maybe that is what it is because some things aren't as interesting or they don't have as much impact on people's daily lives. And, you know, there's only so much bandwidth people have to come to another meeting in the evening or or on a weekend or whenever it happens to be. I really appreciated your suggestion when we were doing the scoping for the comprehensive plan to have some targeted outreach to renters because I think that's one demographic that we haven't heard from very much. I think younger people is another one, you know, people of more diverse racial backgrounds also. Yeah, I think I would just welcome all of the commission members to continue to think about this and give suggestions to the staff. If you have ideas on how we can improve, we are trying to do a lot more broad, you know, email blasts and getting things out on different social media channels and things like that. But we don't always know about all the ways to get information out through religious organizations or clubs or, you know, various Facebook groups or Twitter accounts or I don't even know, but whatever social media or other avenues that people might be a part of because of other things you do in your life on the island. So you know, I think that's a good place to start is just like, let's all think together about how we can reach out to more people in the projects that we're engaged in now. The other thing I wanted to say was, you know, a lot of the way we do outreach as a city is prescribed by state law and city code that was written decades ago and it's very focused on putting up signs, putting notices in the newspaper, mailing postcards or letters to people's homes. It really hasn't, you know, come into the modern era of doing things online. And so we spend a lot of time and resources sending out, you know, 700 piece mailings about a land use change or putting up really boring notices in the newspaper that no one reads. Which I, you know, we'll keep doing it because we have to. But I would love to think more and have more resources going into outreach that would actually reach people, that they would actually read, so.
Allison, has there been any conversation with the city manager or with council in light of the the resolution that, that Kate referred to and what you're talking about as far as modernizing our whether you call it outreach to, you know, various communities or just general outreach of the island to, to develop more involvement?
I don't know what is happening with the, the equity piece. I have not been involved with that to, to date. I'm definitely curious to learn more about it now, so I'll try to do that. You know, I think there's been over the years, many conversations about what does public know? what does public notice look like and how are we doing outreach? We have a new communications manager that started during the pandemic, Mason, and he's been doing a lot more work on our social media channels and trying to kind of modernize that and improve our Let's Talk website, so I think there's a lot of things happening throughout the city. But there's certainly room for more and for continuing to improve.
Carolyn, then Victor. Michael, you had your hand up earlier, I used.
Uh, I'm good, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, no big deal.
Okay, so, um, it's been five years I've been on the commission now. And for three of those years, I just want to throw this out there because, you know, we've been on Zoom here for quite a while, this pandemic is kind of become rather normal in our lives, but I remember many planning commission meetings that were packed with people. So depending on the issue, they were showing up in the, you know, the twenties and thirties and fifties, so we should keep that in mind. I also want to say that, you know, we deal with so many different issues, issues, and some of them are quite rather uninteresting to the public and are rather, you know, technical changes of certain sorts. And, um, but I, I, the staff arranges for quite detailed public involvement programs for some of our more major projects. So, for example, this comp plan revision we're going to be working on for two years. There's a very major public involvement program there, which we were all had a chance to contribute our suggestions for that, and I think that the, the, the program looks good. The, the climate action plan is another one. So, you know, I, I've been rather impressed with the public involvement programs associated with some of our more major projects. And some of that is even before I was a planning commissioner, was on the other end and attending those things and giving my input. So I think, I think there's a lot of very good work being done there. And let's see, I think if we do change our bylaws, I would suggest that, you know, very brief, very concise changes be made. And that would be, I think, preferable. And, um, let's see. Oh, I would suggest looking at what other cities are doing in terms of innovative ways to reach out and get more people involved. There's lots of things going on and and not just city governments. I mean, some of the cultural organizations in the city of Seattle, for example, have sort of innovative ways of bringing in young people, bringing in, you know, more diverse racial makeup to their meetings and and events. So I think there's some good ideas out there. Thank you.
Victor.
Okay, you said there was a motion for equity. I, I, I'm not sure what that means. Was there an agenda bill there or was it a proclamation? I'm, I, I watched this stuff pretty closely and I, I don't remember a, an agenda bill.
Maybe Alison can help me out here. There was a resolution and I thought a motion had to be made to, for a resolution, so I could be in error.
Um, I mean, they do take, they make a motion and vote on approving the resolution.
Okay, so that's what I meant, and they did vote on and approve the resolution, is that correct?
I actually don't know, but I'm happy to research that and send around whatever it was to the commission after this.
That would, I think that would be helpful because I think it has some of the context that behind, behind my proposal here, so. As a point of order, Mr. Chair, do we have the? I, I don't know the process, you know, if you've had discussion and can you withdraw a motion or do you just vote on it?
It can be withdrawn as long as I believe the person who seconds it agrees.
Okay, do I motion to withdraw?
You just say you'd like to withdraw it and then the chair will check with the secondar to see if they agree.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw the motion to amend.
Carolyn.
Agreed.
Okay, it's withdrawn. But I do have the, I do have the sense that there is interest in this. But I think there's interest also in knowing a lot more background and knowing what the city council intended and what the city is doing overall and how that fits into the the other processes that have been referred to here, including the comp plan, climate action plan, some of the other programs. But, so I think, you know, it's to be, to be dealt with later. So I, I circulated a memo quite some time ago and then we recirculated it again this week that really arose out of the issues, the little dust up that we had in connection with the town center work. And there was a suggestion that one of our members needed to recuse himself. And and then I went back and looked at the bylaws, in fact, determined that the existing bylaws are both out of step with the, the new rules that be.
Sorry to interrupt, but just a point of order. Aren't you supposed to move, make a motion for your change and then give your, give your explanation?
Oh, I was giving background.
Okay.
And then I was going to make the motion.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's all right.
I, I, okay.
So just by way of background, that's what happened and so I went back to the bylaws, found that there were some issues associated with what's in there and proposed some language back then. We decided we made more sense to table it. And so now I'm bringing it forth again. And so, as Victor has, has pointed out, I need to bring a motion and so I propose amending existing section 6.1 to a new section 6.1 that would read conflict of interest period, chapter 42.23 RCW and the MICC chapter 2.60 prohibit commissioners from using their positions to secure special privileges or special exemptions for themselves or others. The provisions of MICC 2.60 so govern the handling of conflicts of interest and/or the appearance of conflicts of interest. Period, that's, that the end. What that does is that it it includes now the new Mercer Island Ethics Code 2.60 and eliminates language regarding perceived conflict of interest. Because the appearance of conflicts is both is addressed in 2.60 and the issue of what a perceived conflict of interest is, is undefined in the existing bylaws. And so the point is, is to update that section, make it consistent with the code and to eliminate a very ambiguous phrase that I think could be, could be weaponized inappropriately to attack one or more commissioners. Carolyn.
I think we need to have a second for your motion before we engage in, in discussion, Michael. And I would be glad to second.
True. Thank you. Now discussion.
Adam. Um, I, I reviewed this one, I like it, I think kind of how the discussion on any equity language, kind of the direction it took is let's, let's not have inconsistent definitions at lower levels and let's have everything flowed top down. So I thi- I think this is good to not have a patchwork of lower level and different definitions. I think just referencing existing documentation is a good idea. So that I like it as, as I reviewed it.
Carolyn.
I'm very glad that you discovered the inconsistency between the, the city council, I presume, code of ethics and, and our code of, code of ethics or bylaws, so I'm very for that and, you know, if we do end up voting in favor of this, I'll be very interested to hear what the city attorney says in regards to the particulars. Thank you.
Any other thoughts for the good of the order, Alice?
Sorry, can't find my button. I reviewed this proposal with the city attorney and director Jeff Thomas back when you first proposed it several months ago. And at that time, I think they felt like it was a good suggestion and, and wanted to wait for it to come to the full commission and, and see, you know, if it moved forward with a vote from the commission and, you know, at this point, I would just like to take it to the city attorney and give him the chance to do a detailed review and see, you know, if there's any small edits that he would recommend there. Just from the legal perspective and, yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea and it does sort of sync up with the city code in a, a nice way. And, you know, actually, I'll probably recommend that the city attorney and city clerk look at doing a similar amendment for the bylaws for all the boards and commissions.
So Alison, do we need to take a vote now or what's the preference?
What I would recommend is I think you do need to take a vote to table consideration of the original motion to approve the bylaws. And so let's table that to be taken back up at the next meeting, once we've had the city attorney's feedback on the, the current proposal to amend the conflict of interest provisions.
Okay, do I have a motion to table this so it can be reviewed?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, good news, okay. Done. So Alison, is there a deputy director's report tonight?
Just a really brief one. You probably saw that a lot of things kind of shifted in what we were planning on this agenda for tonight. We ended up with just this very short and light agenda. The climate action plan update from Ross Freeman is getting pushed back until sometime this fall. I think he's working with the council subcommittee on getting an initial draft together and then I think they'll be ruling that out to a few of the boards and commissions later on. And the city council has been working on a few things as well. Oh, I'm, sorry, let me back up, I missed saying that. The other thing that was supposed to be on the agenda tonight was a briefing on the housing needs assessment and economic analysis that a consultant is working on for us right now. The consultant just needed a little more time, so we're going to push that back at least a month, I think it may end up being in September when we get, when we're ready to bring that briefing to you all. We're talking about possibly even doing a joint briefing with the city council so that you all can get the same information from the consultant at the same time. So more to come about that and when it gets scheduled. And then I just wanted to give a little council update, they have been chugging through many of the, the recommendations from you all over the last couple of meetings. Just finding my notes here, sorry, I have a lot of screens open. So, anyway, at their last meeting, Adam and, and Jeff Thomas brought the item that you all finished considering a couple of months ago related to occupancy and adult family homes and the small adjustment to the ADU code that related to the definition of family. We had a little discussion about. I think the council was getting kind of hung up on some of the same issues that you all discussed related to, you know, how do we talk about chosen family or what's kind of the right way to define what a family is? So, you know, Adam led a discussion on that with the council and that'll be coming back in mid-June for their final decision. Um, and then next up, the council is going.
It's late June right now, so it's not possible for.
Sorry, July, I'm missing a month, thank you. Um, and then I guess the planning commission has not considered the other piece of state mandated legislation yet. There was a House bill 1220 a couple of years ago that required the city to allow certain kinds of transitional and emergency housing. We generally already allow that, but we need to make sure that our code complies with the specific requirements of the state legislation. Part of which we don't know yet because the Department of Commerce was tasked with providing local jurisdictions some information about kind of what is your equal share of this type of housing that you need to plan for? And so those numbers won't be coming out until, I think, either later this year or the beginning of 2023. So we're asking the council to actually extend the interim legislation that they passed last year for another year to allow us to get that information from the Department of Commerce before we bring proposed permanent regulations back to the planning commission for consideration next year. So just so you know, that's, that's happening and it'll be going before the council in July for consideration. So, yeah, that's my council update. And on our agenda for the July meeting, we're planning to bring kind of the first look, the first staff draft of the land use element and the transportation element for the periodic comprehensive plan update. So Adam's been working hard and we've got a consultant working on the transportation element and, yeah, we'll start, we'll start delving into the elements and then in the drafting with you all in July. Carolyn.
Two things, when you mentioned that the economic analysis was going to be coming, I think, later in the fall or did you also mean the housing needs assessment? Are those two on the same track now or is housing needs assessment coming sooner?
They'll be together, so the housing needs assessment and economic analysis will happen at the same time. And we're still working out the timing with the council and with the consultant. And I think it may land in the beginning of September, but we'll, we'll definitely keep you updated on when that will be happening.
Is this possibly going to change the dates of our summer meetings that we already have scheduled for the housing work group?
Not planning on changing that.
Okay. Okay, and then one other thing I wanted to ask about is, could you give us just a recap on the town center item at the city council? Would that tend to be one of the things that that could be?
Yeah, they did talk about that at the last meeting. I actually was on vacation, so I might see if Adam wants to chime in and give a little more information. If, I'm not sure if he heard the presentation, but.
Um, I did, but with a big disclaimer that this isn't my project, so I was just listening for my own enlightenment. But they, I believe, agreed with most of the changes. Again, I, I don't, I don't know if they adopted that.
I don't know, it was the fourth reading and I believe it's coming back again in another, maybe in September or later in July, I'm not sure. So the saga continues is essentially the punchline.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I actually listened to part of that city council meeting and it was interesting on two fronts. One was the town center issue and there was really a very, very good discussion. Really prompted by Jake Jacobson with the notion of, of getting some real useful professional input on some of those issues that we grappled with on the town center. And, you know, and I was really encouraged to hear that and that it was, was fairly well received by the rest of the council, which was really a essential element of what, what we were saying, you know, months ago. So that's, that's good, I think that's moving in a good direction. The other, I think, The other, I think, more amusing point was on the issue of the ADUs and the chosen family phraseology that we developed. You know, they started struggling with the same issues we did and the city attorney just said, well, well, you know, we'll just take a look at it and, and, you know, wordsmith it and come up with a good solution. And I was listening to him thinking, good luck. So, so I'll be interested to see what, what they come up with versus what we did. Anything else, Alison?
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else have any comments or questions? Victor?
So I have a question. So in our planning commission packet, the, the headline reads, planning commission's special hybrid meeting. But we are still zooming. So are these meetings supposed to be hybrid? Can we do them in person or is that just a copy and paste error off the city council?
It's not an error. We're we're sort of offering a hybrid option. You'll probably think it's not very great, but I'm going to tell you how it works. We're offering the opportunity for people to either watch or provide public appearances from the community center. We have a room set up with like a smart board, big TV screen thing that people can use to watch the meeting on Zoom. And if they want to make a public appearance, they can do it from there and there's staff available to assist with the technology. So for folks that don't have a computer at home or aren't so good with technology, it provides a way for them to just show up at the community center and be able to join the meeting. That's not quite the same as an in-person option with real people, with us there. We're not quite there yet in terms of being able to staff that for all the commissions. You've probably seen they're doing, having the city council, city councilor, city council members in person now for their meetings. But it takes several staff behind the scenes to make that work, to run all the cameras and the backend of Zoom and the technology to make it happen. And the city is just not at a place yet where we, we have the capacity to provide that level of staffing for all the boards and commissions. So right now, we're going to still be zooming for our meetings with that in-person option at the community center.
Thank you.
Carolyn?
Have a few people been showing up to the community center, Alison?
You know, this just started this month, so I'm not sure if anyone has. No one, I'm not aware that anyone did for this meeting tonight. We're asking that they, you know, kind of sign up in advance and let us know if they're planning to do that so that we can notify the staff over at the community center if they should be looking for someone. So I know that no one signed up. I'm not quite sure. There's probably been a couple of other boarding commission meetings earlier this month. I'm not quite sure how that worked out for those.
Thanks.
Well, once again, welcome to Adam and Michael and our next scheduled meeting is July 27 at 6:00 PM. And there being no other business to come before the planning commission, the time is now 6:57. And the meeting is adjourned. I will, will say to the newcomers, this is, this is another, could be a record quick meeting. We, we often go, we often go much later. So this is a, a nice to have a light agenda for a first meeting. As a reminder to the commissioners, please stay seated until the staff has terminated the Zoom broadcast. Have a good night and everyone stay safe and healthy.
Okay, thank you.